Okay, it is Tuesday, 31 March 2015 at 7:02 PM. And this is actually the April Board, a regular Board meeting in the Village of North Hudson trustees. And I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I have a short invocation. Heavenly Father, look upon our village and our nation with mercy and forgiveness. We, as a people, have fallen far away from you. Help us, Lord, return to your eternal truths that have held our nation together for over 200 years. Let me thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Head?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
O'Brien Bergland?
Here.
Standifer?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, review and approve minutes from regular Board meeting from 3 March. Is there a motion approved? Thank you, Colleen, thank you, Mark. Any corrections or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of the Board minutes being approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Item number three is comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the Board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. Terry? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Teresa Elrichi, 306 Lakeview Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to bring to your attention, last, I believe, September, early October, Excel Energy came down and was laying gas line down our street, and they were to come back and restore our yards, um, because they had a tear up as they were digging the lines. And they never returned, and I believe I talked to either Mark or someone in the office here to let them know that the restoration company that Excel Energy had was supposed to come back and restore never came. And it's right before we started getting the snowfall, so they're going to hold back monies before they pay them, whatever arrangement it was. So I just want to let you know, um, our yard has not been restored, and I don't know if now, and plus, I want you to know, so you do hold back the money, and plus with, depending on when this project starts, if it doesn't start till late in the summer, um, we would like our, part of our yard restored, because I'm assuming part of it will be part of the project, and part of it will not be.
Okay. Thank you. We will make sure that the right folks pay attention to that, and we don't want to pay for something that didn't, that doesn't get completed. I know there's other spots in the village that they did digging, I know up in my neighborhood, there was some stuff done that didn't get completed, because winter kind of snuck up on us, and, uh, and, yeah, we had some even issues with the, we were, our street sweeper got snowed out of a couple of the blocks, so we're going to take care of that this spring, or this spring also. Uh, is there anything else that's not on the agenda, or any other topics? I think I know what most folks are here for, so we'll move down. The next item on the agenda is appointment of Village Trustees to fill a vacant position. I'd first of all like to thank Roderick Anderson for his service on the Board while he was here. He has family and work commitments that he was having trouble, you know, scheduling and stuff, so we have, I have another nominee for the Board. His name is Brian Pike. I believe all the trustees, uh, got information on, a short bio on Brian, and I would like to make a motion that the Board approve the, uh, Brian Pike taking the open spot on the Board of Trustees. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a discussion? Okay, no discussion, questions? And Brian is here, and I would like to, we'll have, uh, I think, in all, uh, in favor of Brian taking his spot on the Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that means Brian will be joining us, and Melissa, would you give Brian his oath of office, please? That should be good, I think the cameras can get you.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Brian Pike?
I, Brian Pike.
Have been appointed to the Office of Village Trustees.
Have been appointed to the Office of Village Trustees.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office?
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Board. Okay. Next item on the agenda, amended class, Perrin B slash Class B liquor license for extended premises, Malloo Inn Spring Motorcycle Run, 11 April 2015. Should be a motion?
Yes, Dan, can I move that the class Perrin B slash Perrin Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for the Malloo Inn be temporarily amended for an event taking place April 11, 2015, with the following conditions? One, possession of open containers of alcohol outside of the establishment shall remain within Malloo Inn parking lot and blocked off street area for event, Wisconsin Street North from Third Street North to Sixth Street North. Two, use of outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for each particular date and event. The April 11, 2015 event to be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Item three, three North Hudson Police Officers and three St. Croix County deputies to be on duty during the hours of the event at the owner's expense, to be billed to the owner by the village. Having the additional officers on foot at the event will provide adequate visibility to deter unlawful activity. Four, owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Five, Wisconsin Street North from Sixth Street North to Third Street North to be closed to through traffic from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM with an open corridor for emergency vehicles maintained. Surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the village. Actual times of detour route are at the discretion of the commanding NHPD Officer on scene. Six, payment for village services must be paid within 30 days after the event. And that's it.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion? Annual rally is, been, I don't know how many, it's been going on for many, many years. Any, all in favor of the amended Class B license for the Malloo Inn Spring Motorcycle Run, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is the set date for re-arg meeting, um, due to the upcoming elections, and the suggested date is 21 April. Uh, I would like to make the motion that we, or if we need a motion to have this approved.
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion or calendar scheduling issues? I don't think there'll be a whole lot of changes since all of us are running unopposed. Uh, all in favor of re-arg date of 21 April, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay. Number seven is the Resolution 2015-02, opposing county assessment proposal in the state budget bill, discussion possible approval. This is, uh, there's numerous things in the budget bill that people like or don't like, but this is a, uh, proposal to take away from the local municipalities, the, uh, you know, we have our assessment, you know, process, and they would move that up to the county level. So is, I'll read the resolution, this is being put up by the league municipalities.
Stan?
Daryl?
I'm being rude in interrupting you, but back to the re-arg meeting, that's five, isn't it?
Oh, yes.
People should, five o'clock?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have that on there, sorry, Daryl, I mean, I should have had that on the thing. Okay, so, back to the resolution. It says, whereas the Department of Revenue proposes a change from municipal assessment to county assessment that requires 100% assessment of every property every year. That's one thing we don't do, we do it as we need to for the present system, that would add cost. Whereas the cost of county assessment of system accomplishing 100% market valuations annually will, will be on average $25 per parcel statewide, which is more than what the Village of North Hudson currently spends in the assessment. Whereas, property owners will lose the convenience of Board of Review proceedings in their own municipalities by having to travel to the county sites for Board of Review. Whereas, moving assessment responsibilities from the village level to the county, which has never been engaged in the assessment of property, will reduce local control and increase costs to taxpayers. And whereas, the proposal is an unprecedented intrusion into local government by requiring the state to suggest a salary range for their assessment director and work with the county to set a county budget and number of employees. And whereas, the Department of Revenue has cited assessor problems as part of their rationale, but has never revoked an assessor license despite having the authority. And whereas, over the last five years, the Department of Revenue has already required additional work and detailed information from assessors to improve the process. And whereas, this proposal kills private sector jobs, grows public sector jobs. And whereas, the Department of Revenue cites that Wisconsin is one of the few states that has municipal assessment, but forgets to note that strong leadership of Wisconsin citizens, our state's dedication to local input, and the simple lack of town government in many states. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Village Board of North Hudson, or Village of North Hudson, St. Croix County, does hereby oppose the implementation of county assessment in Wisconsin and ask for the proposal to be removed from the budget. Be it further resolved that the village are and have always been willing to work with the State of Wisconsin, fellow local government groups, and other stakeholders to continually improve the assessment process. Is there a second to the resolution?
No, second.
Thank you. Was that Daryl first? Did you second that?
I did.
Thank you. And, uh, any further discussion? I know with, discussing with other Village Presidents and town, or and city mayors, there isn't, this hasn't been really warmly received, and, you know, and it's being voiced to our representatives and senators in Madison, and hopefully, I believe it will be, with resolutions like this being adopted across the state, I think we will see this removed from the governor's budget. So all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution 2015-02 is approved. Okay. Number eight. Number eight is a public hearing, special assessments for street and utility improvements along Pine Street North and Lakeview Drive North. And, uh, I can see that there's a lot of folks here for that, and it's, I think this is the biggest attended meeting since I've been on the Board, so I will now open the public hearing. And the second item will be public comments, and I ask you if you're going to make a comment, if you would step up to the microphone, state your name, and your address, and your concerns.
My name is James Delene. Um, my address is 1624 Namakagon Street, Unit 13. I own, uh, 314 Lakeview Drive North, live lot. And my question is, um, on this, on this assessment, um, at the last meeting, I was told that we, that the unimproved lots on Lakeview and Pine already had water hookups, but I'm seeing a charge here of 1375 for water service, and that seems to contradict what I was told at the last meeting by the developer.
Uh, I will refer to, and I haven't been at those meetings, but I will refer to Kevin, our, uh, our engineer.
Thanks, Kevin. 314, the corner, the corner of Pine and Lakeview. So it would be this one. I'm on the second page. Yep. Yes, water service. Do you want me to? Okay.
All right, so basically, we're looking at this particular lot here.
Yep, and the one on the other side of the Dunes Home, which is another unimproved lot, which is, uh, 308 Lakeview Drive North, which is just north of the house there, or south of the house. Yep, yep.
So basically, as part of, I don't know if we want to kind of just summarize?
Yeah.
And we can get into that particular?
You can.
Questions, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, you can summarize, and that would probably help, maybe answer some other questions we may have.
Okay. All right, so I believe, so obviously, we've been in discussions with this particular project for a number of months, and we've kind of worked through the process. We're in the, you know, the Village Board approved the preliminary resolution at the last board meeting, so now, now we've given the go, the go-ahead to do the preliminary special assessment, where we start getting to the numbers and what the anticipated costs are going to be for the affected parcels. So on the second page, just to kind of summarize the particular items, you know, what we're looking at as part of the special assessments. Sanitary sewer, so if there's any replacement, probably aware that the village has a sinking fund, so those, those particular items would be picked up by the village 100%. Any new sanitary sewer, which on this particular project along the south side of Lakeview Drive, there is an extension of sewer that we're proposing. We have three different parcels, um, that are currently on septic system, so those folks would have to pick up that particular cost, because it's new construction. Typically, you know, when we look at doing the extension, um, you have frontage on both sides of the street, um, on east side and the west side. These particular lots here are double, called double frontage lots. We consider those as non-buildable, couldn't, would be basically allowed to subdivide that particular parcel, because they wouldn't be able to meet, um, current village ordinance requirements in regards to width of street, width of frontage, and then minimum lot size. So when we calculate this sanitary sewer through here, this frontage on the west side of the road would actually be picked up by the village. We're not, per se, assessing the whole amount, just, just to one side, because there, there is a benefit on both sides, but fortunately, on this particular case, um, the village would have to pick that, um, cost up. Existing sanitary sewer laterals, current code requires that 100% of that would be accessible to, to the benefiting property owners. That would include new and existing. The water main, again, with replacement for everything here, um, the village has a sinking fund, so that'll be all picked up by the village. The, uh, the water services are a little different, um, for the replacement, uh, those would be non-accessible, that's existing replacements. Some of these other parcels, uh, that don't have services into the lots that are undeveloped, then those would be 100% to the benefiting property owners. Storm sewer, there is a piece of storm that we're extending from Seventh Street up to Lakeview Drive. Current village policy is, is that would be picked up by the village too, so there would be no assessments for any of the benefiting property owners. Street reconstruct, um, since it is over 20 years old, uh, that would be a 50/50 split, 50% the village, 50% of the benefiting property owners. And then along Pine Street North, uh, that's, just has, there's no curb and gutter, um, that's on that street right now. We're looking at proposing that with this project, so that would be 100% to the benefiting property owners. So that's what we use to generate, um, the report itself. So on page five, these are all just a map, the location map, all the, all the areas shaded in, in gray are parcels that are included as part of this, of this report. You'll see some of these, uh, if you look in Schedule C, which is towards kind of the end of the report, that's where all the individual parcel numbers, property owners, frontage, uh, and then the, um, kind of the assessments that go along with that. You're going to see some of these, uh, where they're going to be zeroed out. Mainly because we have double frontage on this particular piece, we have some parcels up on between St. Croix and Pine Street, kind of the same scenario, it's one, just one big parcel, uh, they wouldn't be able to subdivide those into two separate lots, because they wouldn't be able to meet the minimum, um, frontage of, uh, of the lot, plus the minimum square footage. There are a couple other pieces in here that are undeveloped, that are existing pieces that are subdivided. Um, you're going to see in this particular report, report, and this is something that we talked about at the Public Works meeting, those parcels we are looking at assessing, which would include curb and gutter, street, um, sewer and water laterals, just because they are existing parcels, grandfathered in, um, classic example, this particular piece way on the east side, 813, that particular house was built not terribly long ago. So that was a piece that was existing, um, don't have to meet code requirements, and they're allowed to, to build a home on there, so. Um, so total project, kind of page six, and again, this is just, um, estimated numbers at this point, we haven't actually gone out and bid the project, this is just given idea of what, what's anticipated for cost. Uh, we do put in a contingency, 10%, um, just to give us a little bit of buffer. We usually, typically, when we go into the final assessment, uh, report, that's when we have everything constructed, we have everything finalized with the contract, we have final numbers, typically, they're usually under of what, um, what we have, have on Schedule C right now. But, again, we haven't bid anything out, um, haven't had a lot of projects out for, for bidding this season, um, just to kind of see where numbers are ending up with for this year, but typically, they're, they're usually under. So, page seven, uh, the village does have kind of a payback, um, depending on what their dollar amount is, and you can see that on your particular table. So if you had a proposed assessment in between 1,600 and 2,400, they would allow you to pay that over a five-year time period, just to kind of ease, um, the cost of what's, what's being assessed. And then page seven, on the bottom, in eight, gives you the idea of, you know, what the dollar amounts are, what we're looking at assessing for amounts, and then towards the bottom of page eight, gives you an idea of kind of a per, per foot, per service, um, what those costs are anticipated at. You'll see there's, there is a little bit difference between the services on, between the water and sewer on Pine and Lakeview Drive, mainly because Pine Street now is only a 33-foot wide right-of-way, Lakeview Drive is a 50-feet, so you've got a little bit more pipe that you have to put in, and that's where you're seeing a little bit of an increase in, in cost between those two particular streets. And then page nine, kind of a, you know, a breakdown of, um, what's assessed, what's coming out of the villages' general fund, and then the, the utility portion of it, the replacement. And again, then page, um, special assessments, the Schedule C gets with all the individual parcels, and I know there's, there's a lot of numbers that have gone into this, um, and then all the way to the far right is what we're anticipating for each individual piece of property. Again, there's some credits, um, that have been calculated, and there's some footnotes on the bottom, and there's some asterisks in the spreadsheet itself, but you have some that are, you know, corner lots. So this particular piece was assessed when they did the Seventh Street, and then according to your current assessment report, 150 feet along this side is forgiven, so that particular parcel, there's, there's nothing going to be assessed as part of this, this project. That footage gets picked up by the village. Uh, there's a number of lots in here, and they're under 130 feet, so there's a shallow lot credit, odd shapes, um, there's some methodology of how that's computed, and I've tried putting some footnotes on there, just to kind of give you an idea of which pieces are getting credits. And then, sched, Appendix A, that's just more of a breakdown, um, of all the particular items that's put together for coming up with the individual costs. And then, very end is, you know, the public here, you know, it's that went into the newspaper, and then the preliminary resolution that was, that was adopted at the last Village Board meeting. So.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any questions from the Village Board?
I'm, uh, I'm good so far, I mean, I'd like the opportunity for anybody else.
I still don't understand why the, why the unimproved lots are being charged for water service while houses are, are now. Because I had asked that at the last meeting, and we had said there's already hookups for those lots.
If they're, I mean, if there truly is services that are, you know, into that lot, you would still have to pay for the sanitary sewer lateral, but the water service would fall out. And some of these lots, unfortunately, we weren't able to, to find all the curb stops and stuff. Once we go through the construction and we do find them out there, uh, that'll get all, uh, be all taken care of in the final assessment, final assessment report. That particular item will actually fall out if we do find services, existing services. Yep.
Okay, anyone else?
Sure.
Uh, my name is James Leffler, I'm the owner of the house at 813 Pine Street North, and I reside at 902 Sally's Alley North. I have four questions, um, in no particular order. What is the proposed change in depth of the water service to homes on Pine Street?
So the, the new main that'll be installed in the street is going to have eight-foot of burial depth, so that's from the finished grave down to the top of the place.
What's the current depth? The reason, the reason I ask is the residents at 813 Pine Street froze up last year, and it was a major project to get the water running again.
Fortunately, uh, I mean, we don't have like any records that tell us what the existing depth of some of those services is. I mean, I can tell you, you know, the new stuff that we're going to install, it's going to be wellable. I mean, last year was kind of real exceptional.
Yes.
There was a lot of communities that had a lot of issues with freeze-ups.
Right.
Um, but typically, the standard that we install, things within the city and the village, is that eight sort of, so eight feet from the finished graves down to the top of the place. You are going to have, right now, there's a two-inch service, um, that's along Pine Street, and a six-inch fire. We're going to... We're gonna discontinue those two particular pipes and upsize it to one eight-inch main. And that'll be, you know, that'll be all looped from one end to the other, so you'll have flow of water coming each direction, which, you know, should help out with any freezing issues, bigger sized pipe, um, and it'll be dug down to standard depth that we.
Does, does the proposed new pipe on Pine Street terminate at the end of the Easterly run? Or does it connect up to something else?
Two dead ends. Um, the, the two-inch, the two-inch line that runs down through here, um, ends right here. And then coming around from Eleventh Street when we did the two thousand and two project, it dead ends where the height is. So we're gonna have a connection pipe between those two points, and it's gonna be a one-eight-inch duct lined pipe.
Okay.
You said you were eight thirteen Pine Street North?
Correct.
That's the residents I've just booked?
Yes, the blue house.
Two thousand and seven.
They're already on the existing main cabin that comes around off of, uh,
Okay.
off of, uh, Pine. What we'll be doing is where that main ends now, we'll be hooking up at that point with new water main. And that should help with your freezer problem, because now you'll have continuous flow instead of that being a dead end.
Yeah.
Good. She's the resident of that house.
I'm Teresa Holmes, and I reside at eight thirteen Pine Street. The problem with the frozen pipe, though, was it was not between the house and the fire hydrant. It was at the fire hydrant. So when the city and the village came down to thaw the line, they spent over an hour trying to thaw the line between the hydrant and the house. And then my father said, well, why don't you open the hydrant, which is across the street? And that's when the large chunks of ice came out. So thus the reason for the question is because the problem wasn't between the house and the line.
It was the main itself.
It was the main itself.
And with this being, with the village connecting this and making this a loop system now, that will get rid of that problem.
Okay.
Uh, second question is, the eight thirteen Pine Street property has got, is six years old and has a relatively new concrete driveway. The information provided says that there's gonna be a five-foot apron. Does that mean you're gonna be tearing up a good piece of cement and redoing it?
Yes, whatever we disturb will have to put back in kind, so, you know, there's gonna be.
There's no consideration for leaving it as, as is?
So for us to actually get, you know, the curb and gutter and all those things put in place, you have to tear out some of that. And basically, once we're done with the curb, then we'll have to put in your driveway. But it's not gonna be per se a uniform five feet. It might be, you know, ten, fifteen feet up into your driveway to get to a nice control joint that you have. So it looks, so it looks real nice once it's actually finished, you know.
Third question is, um, on the south side of Pine Street, opposite the eight thirteen residence, there's about eight feet of horizontal land and a major drop off. Is it necessary to curb that section of the street?
Yeah, I can, we're looking, you know, since we have storm sewer on both sides, we thought it makes sense to put, you know, it's not gonna be the high back curb. We're looking at the, kind of the drive over, the mountain wall. So it has a inch and a half to two-inch lip from the flow line to the back of the curb. So it's, you know, easy for people, um, to get off to the side, you know, into their driveways. But since we have storm sewer, um, we thought it made sense to put the curb and gutter in for this stretch.
Okay. Uh, last question is, you mentioned a update of the financial plan.
Yep.
Will that be sent to all the affected residents?
It will.
Okay.
That'll be, you know, if we look at doing construction this summer, um, it's probably gonna be into this fall, um, you know, early winter before you would actually see that come out. But yet you will, you will get a copy of that, and this will be, you know, final special assessment report. If the numbers do come in higher than what's anticipated in this particular report, then we will have to have another public here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you said that the water line is eight.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Betty Grove, two oh six Lakeview Drive. So if our water line from the street to the house is not eight feet deep, how does that, how would that happen there?
Well, you know, if we're replacing new services up to the property line.
Right.
So up to the right of the line. So we will be eight feet deep from the main to the property line. Eventually, we'll have to, you know, there'll be a connection, you know, tie on the existing service. You know, if there are some areas that we notice that it is real shallow, we're gonna bring that to your attention. Uh, we will have a full-time onsite inspector during the annual utility work, which will be assuming of the water.
Okay.
You know, one of the questions that came up, you know, in the Public Works meeting is some of the service laterals, you know, very old, could be the old orange bird. We will melt those and we will notify the property owners. That you might wanna consider, you know, getting a contractor and then replace it from where we're ending to your particular house.
If it's not.
If it looks like there's a lot of roots or it looks like it's getting to a point where it's gonna collapse and those type. And again, that's kind of the same thing we did for the two thousand and two project, the Helen St. Croix Street project, just so you're aware of it.
So our water main doesn't have to be eight feet deep, even though the street main is gonna be eight feet?
Typically, we like to have it eight feet, you know, in the, the street part of it, because that's where all the frost is gonna be rolling down.
Right, right.
When you kind of get into the grass areas where you typically have snow cover, um, then, you know, obviously the frost isn't gonna go down as far. But for us, we're gonna have it eight feet deep up to the property line. With the service line.
But did you answer my question? Ours doesn't have to be eight feet deep, then?
It probably can be shallower than that, just because it is in the, you know, the grass.
I mean, I, I have no idea how deep it is, but the, I guess the question is, you know, what are the chances that we're gonna have to replace our whole water line to the street?
I would think, when you get into the grass areas, if you have something that's less than six feet, then I, then I would definitely consider.
Less than six feet.
Look at doing something. And then if you do do your service line, then you, then you probably would wanna consider doing your, your sewer too at the same time, just because of the, you get one contractor and at one time and just complete both of them, it's gonna be the most economical.
But you're gonna be able to tell us how deep our, our water lines are?
Yep, 'cause we'll have somebody onsite, full time.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, I think Kevin, I think you're done. Thank you very much, and thank everyone for your questions and comments. And with no other, uh, questions, I would like to close the public hearing. And possible action is. We didn't have a motion to move forward in the project.
We already made that motion, Stan, last.
It, it's in the.
Did we not?
Yes, I guess. Move forward with that, yes, so we don't really, uh, just, the public hearing is closed and we're done with. We don't have to make a motion for, uh, to get in with the project since we did that last week.
You already had the preliminary.
Yep. So we should be good to go. Okay, great.
You're not anticipating a motion out of the com- the board? Or are we supposed to accept your engineer's report?
Accept the report.
Okay. So motion to, uh, to accept the engineering report?
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, and it's just to move forward, so all in favor of, uh, the engineering report being accepted and moving forward with the project, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very interesting, okay. New business from the board or staff? We're getting close to running through this now, so we, uh, won't have to sit here much longer. Uh, the president comments first, and, uh, this time of year, you know, a couple reminders and different things. Uh, first of all, uh, with the, now the snow melt is gone, and, uh, we've had some folks that, uh, you know, that, uh, seem to have forgot that they're supposed to clean up after their pets. And, uh, and just as a reminder, in the public parks, we used to have, uh, these mutt mitt dispensers, but the, the, you know, a lot of the little guys and stuff with the, with the sandboxes, they were using them for, uh, for different, uh, projects rather than using them to pick up, uh, uh, the, uh, stuff from their animals. So we, and it was quite an expensive cost to the village, and, uh, with as many plastic bags and stuff as we have in the, you know, that most people pick up now at the, any grocery and or other store. You could, it's easier to bring your own along and take care of it that way rather than getting to the park and finding that the mutt mitts are all gone and you got no way to pick up after your dog. Uh, the other thing I'd like to remind folks, uh, you, everybody knows that with this nice warmer weather, the bikes and the motorcycles are out in force again. And I'd like to remind everybody to pay attention to, you know, watch for them. And, uh, you know, hopefully they can have a, a safe biking and motorcycle season. Um, see, with everybody out walking now again, the pedestrians, I'd like to remind those in, especially in the evenings and early mornings, to wear light colored clothing. And if you could walk facing traffic, that would, uh, be helpful so that they don't, you know, car doesn't sneak up on you, because a lot of times people are still using their phones and other electronic devices where they shouldn't be. And, you know, we don't want any of you to be harmed by a vehicle. Uh, I would like to just make a quick mention that, uh, the project on, uh, seven twelve Pine Street, we, uh, proceeded with the raise order that, uh, the, uh, from the proceedings there. And, uh, the, uh, hu- we're, we're moving along with that. And that those folks that were, that live along there noticed that there was a lot of activity there today, but it's not on the agenda, so I can't take comments and I, you know, can't discuss any further. And finally, I'd like to remind folks that, uh, our fire department is having a pancake breakfast and fundraiser on the nineteenth of April, it's a Sunday, from seven-thirty until noon. The fundraiser, and I learned this since being on the committee, that it's a separate entity, it's not the fire department. This is the fire, firemen set up a five oh one C three so they can raise money to buy equipment that would otherwise have to be on the tax dollars. Uh, they bought helmets, they bought, I mean, I was like, you know, wow. I mean, it was a lot of stuff that's funded there through the efforts strictly of the firemen. And, uh, you know, it's a great event, the food is always good, uh, and if you could, uh, you know, if you had, find time on the nineteenth of April, you know, stop down and support the local fire department. We've had, uh, them up in the village and, uh, you know, they are, they're a very important part of our, uh, our, uh, public safety group. So, uh, if you can support them, that would be great. And Gloria?
Um, two items. First, our auditors have been here for the last, uh, two days and they have completed. Everything went well. Um, Stan was able to speak with them a little bit today also. And, um, the second item is, uh, we've had a, a request from our deputy treasurer to, for the village to consider looking at solar pa- thermal panels for the village hall to help reduce, um, energy cost. It's only in the gathering stages, so, uh, it's just to give you a heads up that you will be seeing some information coming forward on that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, Melissa?
Just a reminder that the spring election is on Tuesday, April seventh. The polls will be open from seven AM to eight o'clock PM. And then as a reminder, if a resident moves even within the village, even within the same apartment building, but to a new apartment, you do need to re-register. And you can do that any day of the year, Monday through Friday. It doesn't have to be on election day. If you do it beforehand, it prevents backups on lines that you have to wait in, so.
And one question, since the recent Supreme Court, uh, ruling, are people going to be required to have IDs at this election or will that go to the next?
No, there will not be voter ID at the spring election. It'll be in effect for any future elections, so you'll need to be prepared for that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is plan commission. Uh, I don't see our plan chair, they did meet. There was a conditional use permit for Alvin Guy Hawkinson. That's a parcel down on Fifth Street that, uh, the, uh, board tabled until this month. Uh, the meeting, uh, coming in April because they, uh, still needed some more information from, uh, Mr. Hawkinson and the property owner. So, uh, that is the only thing I think they had on their agenda. And next would be Personnel and Finance Committee meeting. We had, uh, claims and approvals.
And then moved to approve the December fourth, two thousand and fourteen, non-recurring claims of four hundred and seventy-five dollars and the March two thousand and fifteen, non-recurring claims of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents for claims totaling sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you, Ted. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh, suspending issue, so we'll do a roll call vote. And I'll start out with our newest member, Brian, yea or nay?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is purchase of tablets or other devices for the village trustees approval requested. And this was discussed at the, uh, at the Finance Committee meeting. And, uh, uh, as you can see, us all fumbling through beams of paper. And the amount of time to take to correlate all these, uh, different books, we're going to, there's, there's just, you know, a great deal right before Easter on, uh, on i- on i-tablets. And so, uh, I moved to authorize the village administrator to purchase seven iPad Airs for the village board of trustees to be used for the village business and returned at the end of their term of office at a cost not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. Cost of the tablets will be expensed equally among the Public Works, Public Safety, and General Government Operating Departments.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Is there questions, comments?
I just don't like Apple products.
Oh. I, I was really hoping that you had an Apple product, you know. I have.
I've got lots of electronic devices, no Apple products.
Yeah, no, I have, uh, an Android, or Droid myself, so I'll be changing. But, uh, from recommendations from our IT, uh, person and another IT person in the room, that, uh, I guess there's a little less maintenance and, uh, we're, the functionality, I mean, it's, they're, they're both great products, but, uh, we went with the iPad due to recommendations from those folks. And since it's a spending issue, if there's no other questions or comments, Kirk?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and the last item from Personnel and Finance is the amendment, twenty fifteen budget for cost of raising, uh, property on seven twelve Pine. Uh, I'll just, uh, I would, uh, recommend move to amend the north, the, the village of North Hudson to fif- to twenty fifteen annual budget to cover the cost of raising property located at seven twelve Pine in amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Second, Dan.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, just background, uh, municipality must amend its budget anytime the amounts of appropriation stated in the budget or the. or the purpose for which the money is being used or changed. Two-thirds of the vote in the membership is required to amend the budget. And this is class one notice. Uh, during the July two thousand and thirteen board meeting, village board of trustees authorized approved raising the property. Initially, the bid was twenty-two thousand, eight eighty, was approved to cover the raising and disposal of existing residential structure. Upon inspection of the property, was discovered that there is asbestos in the structure and additional seventy, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars would be needed for removal and disposal of asbestos containing material in accordance with the state regulations. Village administrator recommends the budget be amended by the amount not to exceed forty thousand, which would include various miscellaneous costs and with the process. Some of that was we had let, extra law enforcement, you know, for the safety of the crew and everyone there. We've had issues, uh, with the resident in the past. And so we had, uh, we had, uh, we wanted to make sure everybody that was involved in the raising was, was safe. We also had to move a vehicle so that we could not, uh, or that we would not damage it. And, uh, and so that was another added cost. And, uh, the, we put this number in just to make sure that we were going to be covered, uh, in case and we don't expect to spend that much, but we wanted to make sure that, uh, we didn't have to come back next month and say, hey, we need another five grand or something like that. So that's where the number is. And, uh, we can take this out of our, uh, undesigned funds, keeping us still within the, the, the buffer that we maintain per our ordinance. So, uh, with the motion and the second, in that background, is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, and it is a budget issue. Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Next is Public Works.
Stan, Public Works did meet and, uh, we have two items to bring to the board tonight. The first is a, uh, uh, I would move to have Mike McPhillips Incorporated provide street sweeping services for the village of North Hudson at a rate of ninety dollars per hour. As noted in the finance, uh, meeting earlier tonight, um, this is a three dollar per hour rate increase from last year, but we also did not spend the entire budget for two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Daryl. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, uh, I'll start back with Kirk.
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question. Is it really necessary for them to go down like this?
Um.
Basically, we sweep all the streets. If you've got leaves or anything else on there, basically every street would say. If we don't, then we get calls from residents saying that our street did not get.
Yeah, and wouldn't, wouldn't you get nice new pavement in there, you know, I mean?
Why wouldn't you want it swept?
Have you driven down our street?
Yeah, I was been down.
Why would you want the street sweeper to go down there?
Most likely this year, I'm probably not gonna send them down there because of the project, but.
I mean, it's, it's lots of rocks.
Yeah.
On each side, so why would you wanna sweep? It's just a waste of time.
Well, I agree with you this year, but.
Yeah, but yeah.
When we sweep streets, every street gets swept.
But as I say, why do it?
By then, hopefully that project will be started up.
Well, everybody that's drawn there, well, I'm Terry if they, if they sweep this year, okay? No, I, I, you know, I, at the point, but, but yeah, don't, it's just like, you know, too much snowfall. It's like, why didn't you plow? It's like, oh, 'cause we plowed three and somebody will call. You know, so it's, uh, and, uh, next Ted? Oh, wait a minute, that's contract, uh, we just, we just voted in there? We did that, yeah? Yeah, okay, that one's done. Purchase of, or, okay Ted, next purchase for your fire.
Sure, uh, Public Works would like to bring to the board, uh, move to purchase the five-star multidirectional hydrant diffuser from Minnesota Pipe and Equipment and it costs not to exceed two thousand and five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, uh, that's purchase again, Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Could we just, just quickly, um, behind the tablet information, there was a electronic media device use policy? If you wouldn't mind taking that out of your packets and, and reading and be prepared for the next meeting that we'll be, um, asking for approval?
Which piece? Gloria, sorry, I missed that.
It's just not on the agenda.
Yep, okay. Thirteen, public safety.
Dan, we did meet, we didn't have any actionable item, but, uh, would like to remind everyone that, uh, signs for our twenty-four hour parking enforcement and the new engine braking ordinance are now at either end of town. And also for informational purposes, uh, our chief was at a recent conference and, uh, our department won a four thousand dollar grant in what I believe was a dice game. Was that it? Well, anyway, we won a four thousand dollar grant for, uh, for the purchase of the equipment. And that's it.
Congratulations, chief, well done. Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, public welfare.
We did not meet. And neither did Park Board.
Neither did Park Board?
Nope.
So that brings us right down to the item sixteen, Mr. Zappa? May move to adjourn, a second, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-nine. Thank you all for coming. Hope you're adequately entertained. Headed for.